Okay, so in the packet is just a summary. I noticed you have your communication styles. I apologize, it was a pre simplistic test. I find it to be somewhat distracting to start a conversation.
I'm surprised to hear.
Yeah, it actually is for the usual test. And I know we have all.
Is it in the folder?
Yeah, so it looks like this.
It was in the packet on the desk too. So, one page it says communication styles.
It might be on the right hand side of your packet where you can act. Open this, like back behind the red things, all the way to the back.
Okay.
So if you didn't get a chance to take the test online, you can look at these and get it. I'll give you a minute to figure out where you align up.
It was interesting because I kind of read through it and went, okay, that's what I am. And then I went online and took the test and went, yeah, that's what I am.
Yeah.
You know, it's pretty evident sometimes. It made me laugh.
And so, you know, we log on through and start out the different types of tests. There's Strength Finders, there's to be personality master.
Yeah.
So it's some version.
Yeah.
That's what comes around.
Yeah. Made me juggle. I know, I told my husband, who was a manager for years, who did these tests and gave employees due. He goes, I said, which one do you think I am? And I'm not even gonna tell you anything about him. He goes, he gets it right out. He goes, that's who you are. I went, okay then. So I was right.
All right, so I'm gonna stand up here for those of you who are ready. Who wants to start?
Well.
Okay, so what were you?
A planner.
Yeah. Okay, so what are some traits of a planner in a meeting? So how do you communicate and how do you work?
I'm pretty straightforward. I try to be appropriate. Very tried to. Not interrupting anyone. I'm always prepared. I don't ever come to a meeting not being prepared. And I'm really, while meetings, I find that trying to jump chairs just to keep you focused to get to the agenda. Because, you know, you have to go down. Boards can go down rabbit holes real quick and then you can't get back to where you need to make decisions. So I'm pretty focused on that. And I've always been a straight shooter.
Strong in a minute.
What I say is what I do.
Yeah.
I just push forward.
Okay. And so as part of that, how do you work in settings?
I try to really listen to everyone that speaks, but I do tend to get someone to keep us going on task. And I am very aware that others may have far better ideas than me. And I'll pick up an example of some, if one of the other board members says, why did you do this? Which I remember specifically when Rick said that to me on something we were talking about on roads. And I was like, oh my God, that is an awesome idea. You know, so I immediately turned to that because that was a great idea. And that was so moved to me. So I do recognize that others at the table will have better ideas than I do. So I do tend to listen to that and try to pick up on it and move forward with it.
What about the agenda?
No, no, I read everything that we have in front of us. And I always do a lot of background looking. I'm always on the WTA site, the St. Grant County site. I'm county site, the townness, village, city. I'm constantly perusing their sites on matters that are before us.
So what frustrates you as a planner in a meeting? And specifically in the way your guys is making as a planner, what's frustrating to you? And as with that communication style?
I think the most frustrating thing I have is indecision. I'm trying, sometimes things are brought up that isn't where we need to be to make the decision. You know, we kind of get out on the left field or right field on something that really has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
So not necessarily a decision, not topic?
Yeah.
What's for next, now that we, you know, what's, what the? Now that I've taken the plunge. Now that you know what I'm gonna be asking for.
I'll go and I, I'm a thinker.
Thinker, okay. So did anything on that sheet resonate with you?
I'm definitely big picture and conceptual. I read in the extension documents of that, that I'm a skip the small talk person.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, I think Teresa as the chair has had times when she looks around the table and I go like this to her. Meaning it's time to move along on this, been there long enough. Yes, I think, and I, I have a wry sense of humor. I'm actually quite often misunderstood and have been all my life. And I have a tendency to be so black and white that I come across as, I was, have been recently told as rude. And I, because I'm real, I am, I'm real blunt. It's like, that's fine, I'm, I can take it.
So how do you learn, when you're a big picture person and you've got those packets that are, I don't know, how long are your packets? Are they long? Do they get long?
They can be.
Yeah.
Last minute, they're.
So how do you learn as a planner?
I'm, I'm, I do better with hard copy than I do digital.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's my age or if it goes with the thinker personality. I do want to have time to review the documents that I need to come into the meeting to discuss or is before us. And I, I don't do well with short term information or just dump it on me and expect that I'm gonna process it well.
So what frustrates you in the meetings? Has some of that been happening?
I would say that just everything, yes, it has been happening. Because I came in with, in 2016, when we were going into all the big projects from the bridge mitigation and all of it was deadline, all of it was big money and it was massive amounts of data. And they were decisions that there's no turning back once the, and a lot of ours are.
So you didn't have enough time?
It was, I, there was enough time because, well, I wasn't, some people, that, maybe that wasn't the best project, but some people are definitely far better informed or that long term vested. And so I can't track at the speed that they're.
So it's not taking them.
No, I don't think they go too quickly. Kind of all. But on the other hand, a meeting goes as long as it needs to go.
I was just trying to get to what's, if anything, in the learning process and discussions, what frustrates you during that dialogue? If anything, maybe nothing does, nothing?
No, I think I'm probably not the easiest to read. So I'm trying to take in what other people have said and whether I've considered it as a part of my obligation to society.
Anybody who was next?
My wife ain't here to tell me what I am.
Should we, should we?
You want us to tell you? Let us give you some hints.
Yeah, why don't you?
So what do we think Chris says? Practice and run.
Well, I can't wait to go home and see what she thinks.
What'd you say? I can't wait.
I said, I can't wait to go home and slide this in front of her and see what she thinks.
Well, you're not connected.
No, you're not.
I would say mover.
I would say mover.
My short period of time?
That was my thought.
I was gonna say mover, although he's a little.
He's a little bit of a. But he's also a little bit connector, but he's more mover than, I'd say more mover than connector.
Yeah, he's not a connector.
No. What do you think, Chris? Did you go with either of those?
I was thinking mover myself.
But.
No, no tips to communicate with him, don't bark orders. Well, I wouldn't even think twice about it. Yeah, that's not gonna, that's not gonna go well.
Well, I'm gonna put down here casual, playful.
As he is.
That's him.
Straightforward, Sam. Yeah.
Yep. He's definitely active, involved and.
You have.
And mobile, so thank God for that.
You have to come back to the next meeting and tell us if she agreed.
Oh, yeah.
So as a mover, how do you like to learn?
Usually hands on.
Hands on?
Yeah.
Does, does the debate ever drive you crazy since you like to move and keep going?
Oh, yeah, the debate, the debate does, but I also have the ability to to see through the debate.
Not topic. That frustrating, none? Are you okay with that? Just roll with it?
Yeah.
He does have a famous line.
What's that?
Educate me.
Yep.
He does, he does say that.
Well, that's it.
That's a very good.
He can skip the last hour. He asked that question. He's coming from a place of curiosity.
Yeah.
So. Okay. All right. What about you, Megsit? What do you think?
The agenda taught, come in, I must have been spacing out. Something about the agenda.
No, that's what I was saying.
Oh, okay.
That's from me.
Oh, okay. But then Laurie talked about it too. What was that?
The agenda?
I didn't talk about it.
I'm not connected, sorry.
I'll.
Okay.
Are you, are you, you ready, right? Are you ready?
Well, I have to die of the test, so I'm just here to listen.
I believe I'm a connector because I'm absolutely not a planner. I have no intention of being a planner. I have no time to be a planner.
You are connected.
But I, 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 I'm not the most empathetic person, but I can be friendly and helpful. And to me, it seems like in this position, the example I have is the, some people come out to the country to have peace and quiet. Some people come out to the country because they have space to drive their motorbike. One time, them two people lived right next to each other. But there was no right and no wrong. It was just you had to try and create a harmony between those two people. They had to create a harmony. We couldn't do it.
Right.
I just remember that part.
How do you learn as a connector? What's, what's your, what's the best, if there's something new on the agenda and you wanna learn more about it, will you dive into the packet? Do you talk to other people? Do you wait to hear?
I'm, I'm most impressed when they show up here at the meeting and we meet them personally and we can actually talk to them. Someone who just complains to me out by Valley View Trail and then they don't show up here, I don't really care because they must not care. But if someone shows up here like the Trowbrook North people, they started showing up here, they got some stuff done. We helped them get, get some.
So when meetings are happening, does anything frustrate you and the debate help?
Well, I love it when people show up, but when they show up and they just keep repeating the same thing and they disrespect us, that's, that's half hour to 20 minutes of going nowhere. And I hope you can show us, tell us what we can say to stop that.
Uh, yeah. Because that's policy. So, um, but I'm saying, just a shopper and a connector. And so if I'm in a meeting and somebody's talking over somebody else or, or not listening to somebody, that shuts me down in a meeting. Because I, I feel like everybody should be able to have their own to talk. So I understand that. So interesting that at least for, for those of you who did that, there is, we have all different types in here. So, and the reason why I do that is because you're a group decision-making body. You have to come together, use your vote. And you don't always have to agree on everything, right? But you have to have that discussion and the debate and, and the people who elected you all probably are from different parts of the town and have different perspectives that they're sharing with you to bring into the room. And so if you're all, if you're all communicating differently and learning differently, then, then it can be hard to do. So, any thoughts on that?
That's kind of why we're here. There's each one of us that are different right here, right now in the room, you know? And I kind of look at that as, as a good thing also, that it isn't all this one side.
Right, no, and I'm not saying one-sided information about that. I'm just saying how you interact.
Oh, right. And, and I, yeah. It was, what I see there is, there's four different people.
Right. So sometimes when you get, you know, sometimes if you're all wanting to make sure that your streets get loud, you know, it's easy to have consensus, this doesn't matter as much, how you communicate or how you have that dialogue. But if you have something that's more divisive or something that's causing some difference in opinions in your group, then some of how the styles of how you come into a meeting can really shut your, it can shut you down briefly or it can make you feel like the, it's all same, it's personal life in your life. So my point of drelessness is that it can take a little bit of time to think about how you are as a communicator, since you have to be one vote on this group. And one of the best things to bring into a meeting is knowing how you're reacting. Just thinking about yourself internally and reminding yourself, now you all know the different types of styles you are. You're gonna know that Lori's a thinker. Maybe she's gonna take a little time, she's gonna be reserved. That doesn't mean she's not interested. It means that processing.
Great.
You know, and so maybe you wanna make sure that yes, if she has an earlier input, because you now know that she wants something. You know, so just knowing each other that way. Might, if there's a lot of ruckus in the room, Rick might shut down. So that might be a good opportunity to check in with him and make sure that he doesn't, he wants to add. We're aware that he's a connector. Maybe some people are being disrespectful. And we'll talk about how you can collectively leave during a meeting. Start respecting the chair and going through the chair. But there's things you can do process-wise that if you have some disruptions, know yourself and know that you can use those tools to be able to help, so that you can rework this. So.
That's, that's really important to me as chair is because we've had some very, to say the least, difficult meetings, the last four meetings. And we've had outbursts and disruptions. And I'm struggling myself as chair to try to control that. And yet, as I sit here, it's hard for me to figure out how to engage the rest of the board to support me in. And that's really. Somebody else, somebody came on line. John.
Since you brought it up, I'm certainly.
I'm just, I got, I got. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out because I don't know that they know that. But I have really struggled with, how do you become a proactive leader in a meeting, a chair in a meeting and keep control of the room? When you have 50, 60, 75 people in here who are clapping and whistling and hooting and trying to pull people off the microphone? How do you control that without starting to sound like you're not a very nice person?
Um, so let's actually just talk about that.
Okay.
Time is for you. Do you have a public comment policy? Tell me about it.
Well, our public comments are limited to something that is not on the agenda. In this case, the board had decided to hear from people on an item that was on the agenda. So we allow people to speak during that time. So it happened in June, it happened again in June, it happened in July, then in August, we did not let them speak.
So I, so here's a couple thoughts for you as a group to think about because this is a discussion that you would have at a meeting or a work session and, and talk about whether you want to change a policy.
Right.
So some things to think about is I recommend, recommend that you have a policy around public comment, but also around if you, when your comment is on an agenda item from the public. And, and the reason for that is because it helps with the efficiency of the meeting, but it still gives the public the opportunity to have comments, which you're an elected board. This is the only time you're all together. So, you know, best practice for them to be able to speak to all at once. However, as it sounds like you have experienced, that can sometimes get really emotional and passionate. And, and so having parameters around that. So, so your Wisconsin open meeting law is not the First Amendment, right? And so that's very confusing for a lot of people. So, so it allows the opportunity from notice to the public to be present and observe in your meeting. You as a, as a board, create policy to allow comment during it. And I think that's a great best practice. So because that's a policy that you create, then you can create policy on how to structure that time together. And, and so that's important. Now, the thing to keep in mind is if you're allowing people to get up and speak during that time load that you're allowing them to speak, then you can't control the content of their speech because that's what the First Amendment comes into play.
Right.
Uh, there's a great YouTube clip that's actually from Pro Wing County in Minnesota. An individual unhappy with the taxes. He put time, he put time on public comment, his son and his, one of his best friends. And his friend dressed up as a jester and his son dressed up as like a wizard from Harry Potter.
Okay.
And they had their, it was three minutes for that, that county board. And the, the person who dressed up as a wizard, just mourned for the whole entire three minutes. And the one who was a jester, I think, had his spells. So rang the bells. And then the one who was, the wizard just said, like, Jacob, you like a spell. And the, the chair of the board did a great job. And all the board did a great job. They just sat there and listened for the three minutes. So that's really sometimes hard to do. But wait, but good things are pretty helpful things for a, a discipline body to think about creating policy. And that's a discussion you can have. And so they're having the ability, that's why in Roberts-Rosenau have those points that have, you know, point of order, participation. So point of information is being, is used for, again, it's not going to add any technical, but it's more informal, but technically, point of order would give a policy, a project of a policy document, a chair. Point of, point of order is my policy that, you know, a two-three minutes. And then you would rule, yeah, if you ruled a way that you'd like, you could kill it, you guys could vote. And so what's, what oftentimes that goes is it breaks up other stuff that's because you're all of a sudden having a special topic.
But that can't come from the floor, that has to come from the board. Yeah.
And points of information is something for those people who get frustrated and things kind of get off track. Okay, let's, let's talk about replacing the playground, putting, and all of a sudden talking about, should we do mosquito spraying around the, the park equipment? You know, you have a motion on the table that's on the park equipment. And so somebody can say, "Point of information." No, it's, it feel like, I think last year, that we had a motion on the table about the park equipment. We've got that mission, ground care.
She's pretty good about that.
Yeah. And so then, and those are ways effectively help the chair manage meetings.
So for the people who complained at the July meeting that their First Amendment rights were violated because they weren't able to speak from the audience, what you're saying to us when you say, "Oh, you're wrong, it's not the First Amendment."
But if you have a comment, you can't control the content.
Right. And I understand that, but I'm saying, they're not, they were upset because they were not allowed to catcall from the chair.
Oh, yeah.
Like they had in June.
Yeah, there's no First Amendment rights in this limited forum, it's called a limited forum, limited public forum, to judge it. And, and that's been litigated by the, judges will say, these are public meetings, this is what these students do. And so as long as you have policy, it's a policy. And during the time that is the counted time, if people are allowed to anything they want, then, then there's no First Amendment. You know, that doesn't apply to outside the door. Like, if they want to stand out there and catcall, nothing you can do about it.
You're outside the building.
But not allowing them to catcall in here and boo us, boo someone at the microphone or whatever, is not infringing on their First Amendment rights, if they not asked to speak.
So we could, I could kindly connect with these stupid people that catcall and say, "You're very welcome to do your catcalling and your booing, but you have to fill out your address, your name, and your comment, and you can go over to that microphone and scream for three minutes if you want." That's our policy. But our policy is not you disrupting our meeting. You can say it.
Did you have a question?
I have two questions.
Okay.
Can we limit public comment to residents only? Okay? And are we able to have it as, that we don't have?
No.
You cannot limit it to res-
Public, public comment.
Right.
It's different than comments allowed during a private meeting.
I know, but the city of Hudson limits to residents only, public comment.
I think that that's the city of Hudson's problem. They're just going to make sure where we're at.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, they have a turning-
So then that's an interesting question. Of people in, in the, the, so I wouldn't go as far as saying that they're doing anything wrong. I would just say that if you want to be really conservative, attentive of making sure that there's no First Amendment issue, I, I generally like to take the conservative approach to that, because having a First Amendment policy is a bad thing. No? And so, the public, you know, some, here's, here's the argument. And it has been, it's a mixed, it's a gray area. And so cases, first we'll say, goes back again to that, the public. So some cities with the policy will say that's a little bit public, and of course will restrict that to be business of the city. And so having the, the restriction on just residents supports that. Okay, that, that has been decided in some courts, it hasn't been decided in all courts. There are some courts that say, if you're going to have an open comment on in a public meeting, then, then anybody who's at your meeting should be able to have that ability to comment or get a comment. So I'm not a judge, and so I wouldn't be able to tell you for sure one pair or the other. I am a, I am a very conservative person to, to, as far as loss control and avoiding issues and claims. So that's just the safest route to go, is to have public comment, to, to let anything say, yeah. Just to say this way. So, but I'm not saying that it's wrong to have a public attention.
When I talked to the Wisconsin Towns Association about the issues that we were having, they did reiterate that during public comment, anyone can speak. They could say, when it comes to an item on the agenda, the only ones can speak to that, first of all, maybe some, if you receive a letter from the town, you can speak, such as there's a plaque coming in and they have a land next to it, or whatever, you know, they're not in a president's. They told us on matters that were coming before, that we were limited to presidents only. A meeting had to be open to anyone, but we can put a comment on that particular item on the agenda to residents only.
Great, so that falls under that, defined as a, 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 um, or doing their business.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. So I'm going to give you one of those, if, if, that's, I don't know.
I'd like to know the case.
It depends.
I'd like the case law, I'd rather see pretty much. Well, it's your law for-
Yeah, well, I can't, I'm not here as an attorney, so.
Right.
And if that equation was supposed to look at it, but literally not a tough law. Right. There was, I can tell you that there, there is, it's all the, it's some forums, it's dependent on just the actual circumstances.
What difference does that make to us?
Well, I want to know the highest, because the Supreme Court, like I read the last time, New York Times versus Sullivan, nineteen sixty-four, the Supreme Court in an opinion written by Justice William Brennan, reviewed the matter against the background of a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials.
So that depends on what forum it's in. If, if people are on the sidewalk, first, that, that language is for sure going to be controlled. If people are in a setting where the decision-making bodies need language around, you know, when you have a public forum, so it really depends on, on the circumstances, and judges can't really, yeah, at how this, they do a balancing act of, of speech, just, um, attention. So, it's not, it's a gray area.
Sorry, I have another one.
How about, how about the fact of people, you know, coming up to you at the grocery store on a bend here? I can't always just stay the same place for them. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you're in private, it's a private, you have more rights as a private individual. I mean, if they want to stand in the grocery store, which is actually a private business, that would be up to the grocery store to decide what they want to do with that person spouting off inside of the store. But you wouldn't have any ability to say, "You need to stop that." Because, and you can say, "You need to stop that because it's kind of offensive," or I mean, ask them to stop, there's no people using to stop them. The store might, because it's a private business, they might have a turn over. That's not a public forum.
Good.
So, I think your, your way of handling is, you know, "I'm just here to get my groceries." Come to me, you know?
Send me a email.
So.
Can we put on the agenda that we will not be taking public comment?
If you want to pass a policy that the council doesn't take public comment, some boards do that, councils do that, I would, I would recommend it. You're going to have more people upset, because like I said before, this is the only time there the public is allowed to, because there's an opinion on. So, then that pretty much makes it so they don't have any opportunity to say what they want to say to you.
And that's why, because I did read that somewhere, they said, if public comment is not listed on the agenda, then it's implied that it is not allowed.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, so that's, that's, again, policy, so just like you, it's, you know, to, to form a policy, additional agreements, because you have adopted, um, towers. So you have additional, um, but I, I worked with a city that did not have public comments, and I showed up, and, and they were getting more pushback because of that. And their concern was money, and stuff. They had public comment at the time, and then shut down because it was, to get, uh, I showed up and I was full of people who said, "It's on, oh, I'm First Amendment, I'm asking you for speech." And I thought, "Oh, boy, here we go." And it was really, actually, we had a body of discussion, and they came up with a good policy that would work for them. And then the public is happy because they have the opportunity to be able to share what their concerns were with everybody else. So, so the other thing that some boards, decision-making boards would do is, very different with the public comment.
Well, we just said, again, I'm going to put back, yeah, that's been up to the board, part of our town rules. And, and you know, public comment is so much different than commenting on a subject that's on the agenda. It's a real big difference.
I would, I would create a policy, Rob.
And we, we had it, go ahead.
And can we create that policy, or we have it? And then amend or make motions to say, "Okay, tonight we want to have forty minutes total of public comment." That's it.
I-
Can we make those motions?
Yes, you can suspend, but I wouldn't recommend it, because then it looks like you're playing favorites. Because one night, one meeting you're allowing forty, the next meeting, now it's going to be dicey, you're going to stick right to the policy as it is. So I wouldn't recommend it, because it doesn't fit there. And people will feel like you're playing favorites. I will tell you that, and I would hardly find like this kind of stuff going to share. Some boards then have their comment before the meeting, as far as, before the meeting. So then they're having public comment for their public, but then there's awkward stuff.
Actually, you'll be surprised, I suggested that.
Okay, see, I was making assumption.
Like a kind of a public hearing, and that if we have a contentious issue that we give an hour, show up at five, all public comment, and that wasn't accepted.
Well, so what I'm talking, so that's, that's a good idea too, as far as issues that- But some, some, just as a general, will have fifteen minutes. With these then restrictions as far as, like, all of that, it's just, you know, all, all the way down, just session, shouldn't be itching back and forth. God is here to listen, we have staff, we have a staff to direct to, to follow up on, to delegate to each other to follow up on things. Um, like the, but what you're talking about too is a good, we have a really important development issue or a, or issue that you're deciding, you know, that, like, you certainly can have a listening session. Notice it so people know. And run it like your public comment, but it's, it's not like comments, so listening session for purposes. So it's easy to engage the public. And, and know that it's going to be something that's really contribitional. On it, but also have those expectations and, like, we're doing the special, so all the policy still, with the time frame set.
So listening session, would, is it noticed and stated as listening session?
Yeah, that's what I would notice and state as.
And-
And I would put on there, you know, this is not a time for council to engage or answer questions, it's really a time set.
So-
We got to be.
That, that's where I'm going, is, the next thing is, is, is that a forum, whether or not you have a forum of, of the board, or is it whoever shows up that night?
Well, so I'm, if you're going to do it, I would say that's a- Well, so I'm like, if you're going to do it, um, I would say yes, a, a listening session, but that's in. That's where it's, I would say, yeah.
So it, so.
I mean, but no, I, you can put on your notice, it's a listening session, no official city, this is like.
Conducted.
Or decide during the listening session. Um, and so, um, you know, and, and, and whether, so you notice it and whether a forum shows up or not, that's. You guys, um, if you're still participating or still being here to listen, I will tell you that I'm sure all of a sudden in this situation, somebody takes the time to go to something and not everybody shows up, it feels like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing I want to state about that is that things come up on the agenda in the past. We've had a lot of give and take with residents and brought up Dr. Bob. Listen to those residents until we got to the meeting where we made a decision where we just said, we said, we're going to make a decision. Talked about, it's gone through a lot of, or we've been five years, we've said, make it a decision. We never had what's happened recently where having people be mood and feeling uncomfortable at the microphone because others in the audience don't agree with it. And I think that's more of a case of what happens with these really touchy subjects. That it's not so much what's directed at us. Yeah, we're getting yelled at and getting, you know, things said to us that are very unkind. I get that, but it's how others in the audience are feeling trying to come to the microphone and not being allowed to speak. Not by us, by what's going on out there.
And so, yeah, just.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just a little concerned about how we're kind of strained. What I thought the purpose of this meeting was. Uh, all this discussion here, I think, should be on the agenda with the public input and that on the agenda. And to hear them discuss, to hear them hear us. I said that wrong. To have people hear this discussion at a regular board meeting.
This is, this is agenda.
They could be here right now.
They could be here right now.
Some might be.
But I do agree with what you're saying as far as, you're going to, I mean, we're not going to need policy tonight. We're talking about what different best practices are, and that's what this meeting is, is different best practices that others, that other boards do. So this is just a gathering. And so if, you know, if you're going to adopt or talk about a policy or change a policy, that's going to be noticed as to discuss and change policy about public comments. And then that's where you'll be making decisions. So this really is just an application again. So.
I'm, I'm confused on what could be the, what, what would be the primary difference between a listening session versus public comment, other than it becomes messy to try to figure out how to agenda? Because the public comment can be anything that's not on the agenda.
Um, so.
So it, yeah.
Yeah, listening session oftentimes just, um, there's not other business going on and it's just bad opportunities to that topic. But listening sessions just don't.
Kind of the same, that's what I got from the comment. So, Dan. Good.
That's what you get now. But if, uh, the reason that I, because I was the one that requested that public, um, move to the front of the meeting was based on suggested agenda order by, um, I want to say U W Stevens point on how to, to make up an agenda. And what the recommended, how, but not, it isn't a policy, what the recommended order the business should be. And one of the things that they pointed out as a part of going over that was, is it right to make your public sit through an entire meeting just to have public comment? And one of the reasons that, and, and I should, I, I'm not even going to share this.
You shouldn't share it. We're in a meeting.
You're used, it used to be at the beginning and then it was taken off. Then, um, it was disputed that there was no public comment on an agenda. And then it was put on to the end of the agenda. And, um, these meetings were very, cities, meetings were long meetings at that time. Three, four hours, sometimes five hours, that'd be eleven o'clock at night.
These were differences there.
Yep. So let's see, miss, this minute that we just checked here.
It's only an hour. We could be doing some business.
Right. So I think that the point is, Lori, if there is no good.
Okay, I'm like, I, I have to lighten up on this. That's what it says.
Well, no, I love this, I love this conversation because if I were to write the agenda, it'd be at the end. If you were to write the agenda, it'd be at the beginning. And I'd be like, oh, my god.
Let's be real clear about this, Chris. If I was writing the agenda, they wouldn't be stopped talking more than two minutes and they wouldn't be up at the podium more than one time.
There's where the.
That's where the policy.
This is really a good part. And we, you know.
Well, this is fun.
And, you know, so this.
So there's lots of, um, lots of things out there. If, if you as a group ever want to have that discussion and, um, or your city attorney can get up to, authorize me to do that and get that to. So I would, uh, there's examples to look at.
But I do think this was an important part to be just, to be there.
Oh, I love it.
I would also suggest for your having, and, and again, this is more when people come on shore at the end of my pack. But, um, it is really useful for public at the next meeting for their to report back, right?
Yes.
Oh, if you have a delegation, especially right now. Uh, if somebody comes up and wants to talk about a situation, you know, there's a sidewalk that is. Now, this, this is a huge traffic, it's dangerous then. And listen and then delegate to somebody to that. If it's never brought up again, people sometimes feel like they just kind of, they tell you something. And, um, and so having a report back, or the next meeting. This was raised at the last meeting. We had so-and-so instruments, um, who's what we've got. And then that just kind of closes the, closes the loop, like makes people feel as though our, our, our activity. So I think we did a job of that, so.
Can I ask the, so do we have a public comment policy and an agenda item comment policy? Do we have those two? We have both of those.
No.
We don't.
Town rules state, um, public comment or something that's not on the agenda.
So I would suggest we go over them.
It's been changing and it's been.
Right, but we need a policy on subject.
Commenting on other things.
On agenda items.
Yeah, which we don't have.
Which we don't have. Which we need.
I, but that's on the board another day.
Another day, yeah. And it can be on the agenda and the public can talk about it before we get it figured out. Help us, or not help us.
Public comment used to be rule five in twenty eighteen.
That has changed. We changed since.
Put it in the middle. It's trying to be connector in harmony with these two over here.
Seventeen twenty. But it hasn't changed since. This is four eight twenty-one.
I didn't think it's changed since, she said, year eighteen.
Oh, okay.
So I think it's good to remember too that you're also saying, I would imagine that.
Say that again, Pam.
So I would imagine if, kind of you ran to, to go up. Better things you might see. Sometimes, you know, sometimes the answer is I want things to change, but some like, things to change is change. At a better place for your perspective of that needs, right? Think people take the time to have a lot of meetings and subject to sometimes cat calls just because they want to disrupt the whole. So, um, I think that's a good point, that you're all, you're all giving your time well because your community is important to you. And the other thing is that as group decision-making, when you go from, um, with that, that winning approach, when you're running, um, maybe you have, um, some, some issues that are important to you or politics that are important to you come into meetings and do acquisitions. And so knowing that each of you represents a different part of the town and that you're all bringing in your perspectives and you're going to have the opportunity to vote, um, whenever the majority of that decides, that's what you're going to do. So really shifting to that problem-solving approach and accepting what it is. That's why you're here, to vote, you know? And, and we'll talk about how to ask these questions to be curious and, and learn what you want to know at the grocery store. Uh, but so that you can have that debate and, and sharing the research for those who are, who are planners who like to research. Having the opportunity to, to educate others. And that might change the decision or not, but the whole purpose is to get to that decision. I worked with a, um, a city that, um, had a community garden that was guarded by preschoolers. And there was a desire by parents that wanted to consider to have stoplight events. It was safer for those preschoolers to get to the community garden. And the proposed funding source for that was a special assessment. Um, and the community garden, a lot of the, a lot of the, however, yeah. Um, so a number of elected officials happened to be there. Didn't feel like those properties should be solely responsible for that stoplight. And so they both came to the meeting with, uh, yes, a stoplight, call stop. So that's, that was a position. And, um, and then it became, well, why not a stoplight? Well, because it's too expensive. And well, so you're saying that keeping a preschooler safe has a price tag on it? You know, so that's where the conversation went. And it actually hit Twitter. It was all over. So we had a meeting, really talked about that issue and asked for that, educate me or help me understand or so digging into what the other ones were. So. So is it the, the fact of the stoplights or is it the funding source? Well, it's the funding source. Well, tell me what bothers you about that. I don't think these two problems should be the ones for assessed, sold for that. Well, so if, if there was some other funding source, would you be open to, to putting in some safety measures? Well, yeah, you know, and so then it opened up a dialogue. It ended up with waiting on a crosswalk. And flashing like stoplights. Um, which is less than stoplight items and some, some from the budget. So she, she goes, I mean, the point is, is they, they weren't able to have that discussion because it felt too. Yeah, um, so really, we, you can try to go to that integrative solution. Um, and to do that, it's really trying to figure out what people like to start because a lot of times you have interests. In nature, just to, to, we listen to people and we have a position. You're listening to them to figure out why they're wrong or how you can tell them you're wrong. That's just in human nature. Um, and so really transitioning to this and to like, Ash, we all talk to other people. What do they know that I don't know? Get curious.
And sometimes you have to vote according to what information you have and the people that are, they're talking. Because this last vote we had, I, I if it was. I didn't vote the way I felt. I voted the way the town people, the most of the town.
And so I think that, I mean, everybody's going to approach it differently. Probably feel like they should vote. But that's whether some people feel they were elected to, like to trust in their judgment. And so as a fact checker, making that, that decision based on your judgment, some people will think it's not about me. It's about what I'm hearing from the people that I talk to and that's how I should vote. That's a complete personal call for you as an elected official.
It is.
I, I would say that being transparent, if, if, if it makes you feel comfortable, transparent about it. I listen to the residents. Um, everybody this week has told me this. I, I personally might not have those beliefs, but I was elected, I believe I was elected to represent. Do you? And so I'm moving this way. That's, that's. I, the, the one caveat I will have is you have to be careful when you're out in public not to represent how you would, the town, yes, but also how you would vote. Because that's really important because you are here to hear debate from each other, get input from each other, and make the decision. So if you're out at a neighborhood meeting or I teach, I or something, you say, absolutely, I'm going to vote against that street project and I'm sure everybody else wants against it too. Um, technically that, and that has gotten some, um, decisions in, in particular, perspectives and so on. Decisions of, because a judge has said that it wasn't a reasonable, it was arbitrary just during the decision process because there was all this evidence that you're out advocating and arguing. Oh, just keep that in mind. I mean, you're here. This is, this is where you're supposed to be learning. You're supposed to be listening to each other.
But the residents have right to know where you stand, right?
I, I think that there's a difference between, um, I, um, I'm reading this way or this is how I feel based on what I've heard so far versus I, um, I'm not going to listen to anything that night. This way and I'm going to advocate. That was what the difference was. Was this person became an actual advocate for this. And it, and it was, there's also a difference in the type of decision. So that was a, what they call a quasi judicial decision. It doesn't matter. And so, um, that was before the resident. Sneak from there, so to set. And so, so again, that's going to be stupid. I think as a general rule, just be careful. Of course, you're going to listen. Of course, you're going to say, wow, that would be a solid result or whatever. Um, I would, as, and once I've started on, I would just say, I'm waiting till the end. Here everything is the way. You know, if I feel like I need to express something, this is the way I'm reading, but it's. Here.
And, and it is a violation of open records to poll each board member. Say if I, I would want to call them and say, hey, are you voting?
Yeah.
And that's illegal.
That's all.
Yeah.
If it was like, whenever you know they're.
Yeah.
The decisions.
Well, I think the WTA says that anything that's on the agenda.
Right.
So.
But as you all know, some things, yeah, they're up the table or, you know, kicking each other out. So that's going to continue. All right, just some, and things that, um, today's environment, there really is, um, some polarization in our own domestic government. So it can work with you. While like, um, like moving forward to that, that plus polarization. It can be hard. And so this is just that same, going towards integration, really that deliberation. And here you, you know, you're weighing alternatives, you're being curious. Um, so we talked a lot about styles. What are you guys seeing? We should give a new picture.
Rabbit.
I didn't hear a question.
What do you see?
Bird.
Bird?
Don't see a rabbit?
Rabbit.
I had a rabbit. I had a rabbit.
Get a vision.
Crystal clear.
For those, which one don't you see?
I see both of them.
Oh, you see both. You're looking at it, so you see, you were thinking about it. And I was, I was.
I was trying to decide if I needed my bifocals or.
I thought it was a lake with an.
I saw a piece of lumber, if you really wanna know.
That actually were in LA, in Rhode Island, and it's. Turned a flat. You know, they, they need to get pictures out, whether it's the old lady, young lady. It looks like two faces.
Yeah.
But the whole purpose of this is just, we all see things differently. So our brains are wired differently. So that's part of that communication thing, our styles. But also we all bring in different stuff into the room. So I, as a woman who's fifty-four, I'm gonna see things differently than Chris, how we are. Because I have just a perspective. Maybe I have a life experience about a certain issue that, that's gonna change my perspective in that room that none of you are gonna know about. Right? And so just like, I have this wonderful dog, he's a Bernardo. Feet, he's fluffy, he looks like a puppet. His head is just like a puppet head. And some people just run up to him, just wanna cuddle him. You know, when we're on the block on the street. And he's furry and his tail's all up, just his pants are around like a little bit. And some people go the opposite direction because he's a big dog. And I, I would guess that they each had an experience that made them. And it's the same, so there's gonna be things on your agenda that are just trigger points for each of you that the rest of your department, but you choose to share it. Or you can self-manage yourself and think, I really need to, to learn more about this agenda item and to get my biases and assumptions. And try to look at the rest. So, so it's the flip side. How you communicate and learn, it's really what you bring into it. Yeah. That's what I'm seeing a lot of in, you know, one person, for generations.
Sure.
So a lot of generational differences, perspectives and, and the viewpoint of how they should evolve. So you got the older generation who's very much, you know, chain of command. And when you've got another generation, it feels like they should have. So.
That goes for how you raise kids today too.
I know, I have my twenty-five-year-old daughter, she was just out of college, she was a student. She had gotten a job, she lost her job, but then the, the company went through some trying times and they lost a lot of people in fairness, so they switched her over. She was so upset. Said, well, what's, you so, do you know that we switched my job? Maybe? And I was like, Maddie, you're twenty. You do what you're told. Like, you know, you like me to have a job and you do what you want to do. She's like, no, you need, no, they need to have sessions and they need to. So, so and we were just talking about, oh, you're trying to meet and bring your own experiences and perspectives. And some of that's in the generational. This is saying my daughter felt like she should have been, you know, the CEO of the company should have come in. This must have been one of her. She should, I want to have a job change that. Like, no, it does not. Just to be mindful, you got a lot to think about when you're in a room of, of people that you're making a decision about. So I think you guys probably know your style of government. It is, you know, I. Okay, spoken. Right? Supposed to be a non. That's hard to, because we have that slide before with the duck and the rabbit. Politics are, are part of our perspective. So it's something that we do ourselves a lot. And I would just work with a, a group like yesterday where they were having a lot of, there was frustration in the group because some of the newer members really wanted to talk about some, some. Type issues.
Some way.
Global warming, some climate change, important issues, important to them. But there were others on, this was a council. You know, make, well, we don't make decisions on, on climate. Now, if you wanna talk about a solar garden, sure, but other than that, we're, you know, do that kind of talks. And so I think that that's good to remember is that the role that you serve in is supposed to be nonpartisan and, and really make the decisions for the operation of the town.
We have to keep in mind though that we're servants. And if residents come to us with an issue that matters to them, we, we should address it.
So I think that that's something that is a point that you can talk about and decide what you want to do on your agenda or whether you wanna have a listening session about it. And so, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, so elephant in the road, we have the Second Amendment ordinance. I don't know if it was an ordinance or a resolution, but I didn't look at it. You know, those have been proposed at many different cities, counties, boards, town boards. And people are all over the, the report about. So, but it is proposed as an ordinance, if you wanna have it on agenda, it's put on agenda. If it's decided to be on agenda, then they have a comment about it, it's hard, it's. That, right? Policy, but then vote and that's the decision. If, if you go as, if you go as a board or cheering a lot about it in the community and you feel like it's a topic that you wanna have a listening session, have a listening session. It's really up to you as policy makers. But that's gonna be a big decision.
So that's how we should have handled Second Amendment sanctuary. We should have, probably should have had a non-binding set listening session before we had any agenda item where we may have voted on it that would rile up the people.
Yeah, I'm not, I know, it's not my place to say.
No, but we could.
That's, that's something you could talk about. You know, it's an option of the people. But I'm certainly not gonna.
Oh, you said we could have talked about it as, it would have had to have been a, an agenda item.
At the end of our, at the end of, if you want to end of our meeting, not tonight, because our regular meeting says any items to the next agenda. So most towns only allow supervisors to put an agenda item on the next agenda by saying it during that time and getting permission to read to put it on the agenda. Normally, I say to you, we didn't decide on two, six, ten, fourteen, I'll put those on the next agenda. Did you all agree at the time we talked about them? But we do them on the next agenda. There's something new going on. I set the agenda. In our town rules, it lets supervisors put items on agendas. So that didn't get discussed by the board at the time, it was just placed on agenda by supervisors.
Then I, up.
Then we get a down.
Could have immediately said, let's send this to a listening session.
Yeah, the next meeting.
I don't think, you weren't at that.
I wasn't.
Yeah, at that one meeting.
Just talking.
I was at.
The one where I requested a, I may have misspoken, said public hearing. I, and I asked for something similar to a listening session and then it was the, it was the next meeting that came up at seven o'clock, oh, the assessors. So we had to cut it off and, yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna just, I disagree, key was at June.
First.
Yeah, that's not the one I'm talking about.
Twenty-second. On June twenty-second.
No, no, I asked for a public hearing. Anyway, you can move on.
And like, like, you're right, you're right. Yeah, that's why I can use it.
Absolutely.
Right, right. Yeah.
You're right.
I just, just for you to know, before, when issues come up, those are things you talk about as a board, time and again, if it's something that, that your board thinks is a good idea to hear more discussion about. Through, within board, when you have that policy, then when the board makes the decisions, it's just.
So would that, that be discussed as a part of the agenda that says items for next agenda? At that point, we could have discussion?
You could say, you know, I'd like to have this on the agenda.
For discussion on.
And then we're talking about, yeah, gosh, that really seems like a big issue. Maybe it's something that should be a listening session. Or, you know, maybe we should direct somebody to look more into it and report back to us. So I mean, there's, my point is that you have the ability as a group to have those discussions and make a decision, that's the decision.
Are those listening sessions still, there are rules in place about, on, to talk? No interaction from the audience, does it still apply to that?
Yep. And I will tell you, not that I'm trying to sell myself services. And if you know that there's a really hot topic, oftentimes we're.
And mitigate that.
Facility, because there's different exercises of.
Sure.
That's, that keeps things clean and, and not just somebody standing there that's. So I mean, not trying to spend your money there. But there are some times in certain situations. Emotional, passion, having an outside. Say, second. To amplify people. I know, and it can help you hear what the other person's gonna say, but it helps. And, and that's not the case for me. Second.
Well, I, wasn't there, did you say something about a noise ordinance?
Got it. Big noise ordinance, you'll, you'll have fifty people here if you say we're gonna pass a noise ordinance.
Well. Right. Was not prepared to bring back a noise.
No, I mean, a while ago.
A while, long time ago.
How many years ago was that?
But whether you call it a noise ordinance or a nuisance.
Or a nuisance, whatever.
It'll bring fifty people here.
Oh, yeah.
How long ago was that?
Yeah, probably longer, I was gonna say ten, but probably longer than.
It's, it was, I was still on the board then. Yeah, I don't think you did, thank you.
All right, I'm saving this slide because I think you know your statutory rules. Right? Any questions about that?
Yes.
Okay, and so supervisor, you know your duties? Anybody have any questions about that? A lot of duties, a lot of statutory laws.
Yeah.
I was surprised that you're, who've been those village towers and. Why not? But you also have to like, those.
Yeah.
Okay, so here, here's a lot of what we talked about in society. So it's just in your packet, I'm not gonna just read all of them. But you've had some conflicts, so coming into your meetings moving forward without your sessions, getting each other's back and being each other, you know, and knowing how you all communicate and I think will help move forward. But other, other than that, a listen to learn rather than pretending to listen while you're formulating a counter argument will be useful too.
Ken, are you gonna touch on, you have to do a social media?
Yeah.
Okay.
It turns to you. All right. Um, I'll just, so, uh, staff, challenges. So, oh, I will go quickly back to, there's, there's a, I'm gonna make you search through here again. If at any time. See, maybe it's not here. Oh, maybe put, oh, wait, that hurts. This board collaboration, it's a sheet of boxes and so once you get your staff up and running, I would just make a recommendation to you, a suggestion, not a recommendation, suggestion, that when you get staff up and running, then you have. Yeah, that was an apple setting, I don't know what you're doing. And in these, as you're talking to some of the folks that, that, or does that function at all? How do these, like, communication offices? How are we going to, you could, exactly, there's. You're about something that needs to be addressed. It's the best way for us to get that information. So that everybody knows it's happening. And the staff is, so it's just a list of, of different policies and processes, pages that, that are useful for staff, working as a collective. But that's what that is. And so this is reflective of that. So here's some of the best practices that I found that that would benefit from. And that's having either a client, staff, board meeting, for you to do goal setting, priority setting, whatever you wanna call it, you don't have to do it, which is you to do. Some points give, no, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, that, but just, just an idea of what you're, what you're, what you're gonna be, your top three priorities for, you know? And then that can clearly be included to staff. You all have a common direction, they know which direction you're going. And then something comes up like COVID. Then they can come back and you can talk to each other and say, all right, here was our three priorities. Now, like, what's gonna get? So it just keeps that flow of communication open and it keeps everybody on the same pole, same path. So, so that's useful. Having a common practice on how boards communicate with staff and then getting information to each other. There is the, the open meeting law. So good best practices to use with staff. So do you have any reference right now?
Yes.
So let's say that Rick has some great information about an agenda item. You can get that information, so I can say, I would like to share. Council, before the meeting, and then you all can have a better discussion. Of that information, that also works with questions. So asking a question to staff and the next staff person might feel like, wow, the whole. So it's just a good way to talk about what we have.
That's a really good tool. And I think, did we all know that we can send all that information or questions to the clerk and she can disseminate or? Moving forward, how about the chair and with meetings with other, like, chairs of the other areas? Is that something that she could share with the clerk and the clerk could send to us? Well, she has meetings with, say, Town of Hudson, City of Hudson, they get together. Is this something that she could, like, put together in notes or something and then share with us through the clerk?
Well, so I'm not gonna set parameters of what should be shared, but I'm just saying if any of you want to share or something with everybody, then using a staff person is the best practice to do that because that's not gonna violate.
It's usually.
What's that?
Usually I need another caller in court.
No, I mean, like, any other, you know, if you have an update, say, on the library. No, but I mean, is that something that you can share at a time or?
I mean, I, if I have it.
Can, I have, I think the, the point, my point is, is if there's something involved, just like each of you are saying, gosh, I want. someone first to know this, then I can't send it directly to you all. Because, gosh, you might reply to me and having a conversation, and that's, that's not okay. So, but if I send it to a staff person, they can send it to you, because they're not the decision maker. And so, they're just distributing information, um, as a non, non decision maker, and you respond one, it's not mandatory, so. Now, God, there is, say, well, Darla says that she'll be this way. You know, that's, that's not. But, uh, but it's just a, it's just a mechanism for. Because I think as a group body, it's hard to get information back and forth to each other when we're worried about violating. And sometimes that can cause means to go wrong. Sometimes that can cause, um, people feeling like they don't have the same information that it all has. And then that goes personal, but it's just. So, it's just a good best practice to have. Um, the other thing, it sounds like workshops, we can, so that's about that. People have that dialogue, like, depending on workshops where you don't make necessarily a good decision, you just wanna have a really dialogue about something. Have to, you can notice every, you spend, have a discussion, logged. Oh, common policy. Next meeting agenda, you can actually have the decision and both, say, discuss this at a workshop. I, I feel this way because of what we discussed in the workshop.
Can I go back to your board collaboration?
Sure.
And, um, this is a, a, maybe a little bit personal, but I think we need to talk about this white elephant in the room deal.
Okay.
Um, once decisions are made, everyone is willing to get behind the decision. I'm directing this toward you, Carla. Are, are you okay with the way it went? I mean, what if someone comes up to you and, and says, we want this back on the agenda?
Well, I know what the Roberts rule states, and I think it's in the town rules too, is that anybody uh, can ask for it to be reconsidered.
Okay.
And, uh, then they would have to approach someone who was not in agreement. And then it would be up to that board member to bring it before the next board meeting. And I think that is the deadline then. You have to bring it before the next board, and they, they would then, whoever that board member was, that they approached would have to ask for a reconsideration. Be placed on the agenda. So, it wouldn't even be me involved.
That's not what he was asking.
Well, I, I, okay, so it would have to be one of us to vote it the other way.
Anything that can be reconsidered has to be done by the prevailing side.
Right.
Okay, okay.
But you were asking her, is she behind the votes that was taken?
Diane.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm not understanding the question.
Once decisions are made, everyone is willing to get behind the decisions. I. I can give you two examples. Number one, I didn't think we should go to our own zone. But once the vote was out, I'm all for it. Let's do it. I don't think we should go ahead with that playground with all that really nice surface in there. That got voted down too. I'm on board. Bring the wood chips in here. Let's go. I'm just not sure if you're with us on the second amendment sanctuary, this town not being a second amendment sanctuary.
Well, I've, I don't have a choice. Since the vote went the way it did, I guess it's the only way.
That's not his question.
I think, I feel like that was. Grant's.
I, I understand her answer.
Alright.
Do you think it's different than how, like, you're asked to present chips?
Yes.
Yeah, why is it?
She just said she had to accept that. She didn't say she was behind it. But to help make it work, she just said she would accept.
Well, that to me seems like some.
Meaning?
If she's accepting, that's, that's her, and remember, we're all different. We all have different personalities and abilities, and we're connector.
Right, yeah.
So, you're gonna be like, okay, we're doing this, and for Darla, that probably is a good decision. And, uh, it's a hard decision. So, I think, I mean, it's perfect behind, over to certain pay, people come up to you, you should be, you should be this, and to say, you know, I don't necessarily disagree with you, that's how I, too, but the board made different decisions, so that's where we're going. Uh, I think that the step though, that is the bigger question, it's not, you leave bullet people. It's more of a, how, it's more of a divide type thing, is if the next thing that's is going down a radical, talking bad about why that decision makers and why that decision was bad, and I'm not saying that that's happened by any means, I'm not. But I have seen that happen in communities, because what happens a lot of times, particularly with issues that are politically motivated or is passionate, because constitutional rights are passionate. And so, you'll get the people who just want to feed into that. Uh, if, if they can create a division between, um, talking about how bad the decision board decision was, then that's kind of, well, right. I've seen people texting elected officials during, especially COVID, or on screen saying so and so just woke up rising. I know it's not what you just said, and so if you get to that point, and then people, you know, then the teams have what, some of what you had, and that happens because, um, if your group is not a team, then they think that they're going to be off one way. And it doesn't always happen, but sometimes it will. So, that's why.
But it's difficult to be in the right place, because we can have a board number, one time number, two accounting board, so many more. And this, people was firmly against it, but the board won the floor, and he went in there and convinced them that the board is not a wrong way. They wanted, because they would sue. Okay, back. Dave, which was not keeping it better. So, you have to be careful too, when the board does it in a certain way. We all have to acknowledge that that is the board's vote.
Yep. I don't, and I honestly don't think Darla disagrees with. Yeah. But that's, that's the one to vote. And that's the, the top's good health. I just think, like, you have to go along with this. Grand, which is still at the bar, or, and your, your government, and starting when you don't have it all upset. That's, that's when the personal part comes in, that's some, it's hard problems to, especially.
Oh, people wanna hang you up on stuff, to hang you up to drive. Also.
So, there's a slide on here, so it's in there, okay? So, um, it just talks about different public comments, and like I said, I just worked for the city in Minnesota, um, three weeks ago, and their issue was public. And so, I provided them a couple of different public policy policies.
Yeah.
So, I have them at the ready, if you guys wanted to. So, just talked about the team, just to have that discussion. Um, so before we get to social media, and I know, do you guys need to get on the Zoom? And they, sit for a while.
I can take two, break it up.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Thank you. Do you want to run the thermostat?
Yeah, are you cold? Because I turned it down.
Oh.
All right, so engage in a dialogue. We've talked, and I know we're gonna talk about social media, or, I know, tired, but how you ask questions during your dialogue can make a difference, and so I just want you to think about that. Um, and we talked about getting to the underlying interest of it, um, so educate me. Um, tell me more, help me understand. All of those are more end- ended questions, um, but don't ask a question if you have an assumption of why. There, because it comes through.
Okay.
You know, it's gonna do that. You know, you're asking that because, so you're making those assumptions. That's not a good way to ask the question, because your role is to uncover information, and you're not uncovering the issues there. So, so keep that in mind, uh, and so giving assurance that you listen to their story, that also helps you listen, so. They educate me, some, you know, I agree that it should be a whole part of structure. Um, not with a nicer.
You're right.
Nicer surface, uh, and so, instead of responding, why you can have nicer surface, and tell me, tell me more about whether it is that nicer surface off. And so, having that dialogue, but it also shows a consent to not just arguing back. Um, and, and remember to treat, as hard as it sometimes gets, we're all here for the same reason, and you're all here to share your, so that they can respect. Everybody feels is, um, passionate about what they're saying, and is, about what you're saying, so just trying to remember, recognize that. And if you're getting, feel yourself getting defensive, to say, I, I know I'm getting defensive, because I thought that, you're gonna say, great, that's not very intense, you know, I really do want to try to understand, I am passionate about it, and just, just be, sometimes us as Midwesters, um, we like that. And so, I, I think that, that, that's actually, it helps in many ways to continue to say that, or usually you say, fine, I'm fine. Instead, if you're more transparent, like. Um, so, there's a lot of studies, um, so, but that, if, if people have to lose, if they feel like decision goes, goes, that, uh, feel like it should go, they at least, they'll be, that. Happen. But, um, I can continue, if you don't take the time, if you have people then, then. So, really taking that time to make people feel like they have a safe place, and a lot of that's around policy, so what can you guys tolerate? A lot of points. Um, and so have that, that um, space to, to listen, so avoiding remarks, if you can catch yourself in that saying, you always, why do you, whatever you put, you in there, that's your basically assumption. So, if you keep it to eye. Uh, I'm confused. I don't understand, um, why we should go out. I need to be educated about that. That is just lost in passing. But you always, why do you, I'll commute, those are all things that are gonna make people immediately start listening for how they. Um, you can stay on topic about the issue rather than the person, that's gonna be a winner at any time, uh. So, some people like to, to use active listening, so, um, because this is what I'm hearing you say, some people that lots of just, you know, roll like. We have to interpret it, right? So, finding a way that can clarify what you're understanding. Because if, if there, I know I've been in all these conversations, I say something, and I'm sure the person on the side knows exactly what I mean, but they do something, right? We walk away from each other, especially with a staff decision. You're gonna get implementation of something that was, a board didn't give it decided, you know, so having that clarification, and sometimes that means, I wanna make sure that we're on the same page, you have to be what what you understand, what you say, and then you get back, and you're like, yep, that's good. If you're, if you're back, and you say, no, that's not quite what I was thinking. And you can, and you can confirm that everybody's on, on the same, but, um, you're saying. And then the de-escalating yourself, so that all goes back to knowing yourself, that's where your mission style, self, the different reasons, the, some people, some people count. I would say that using your phone as a way to de-escalate yourself is not necessarily the best way, um, that causes a lot of distrust. You have hopes and the vibe, vibe, so. Sometimes we have to, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we have to, sometimes we don't. Because sometimes we have things that work, things that we have to have a bias of course. Oftentimes it's best to say, I don't. For that. Especially when the public is watching. Or a whole time, they're assuming that you're talking to each other or that you're texting something. Remotely, and you need some information source.
You never answer when I text you.
Yeah, there's just a lot of distress that's caused by that. So just keep that away.
That guy calls people right during the meeting for us that we need to be called.
Yeah.
I'm glad you have your.
So social media, I don't have any slides on, but let's talk about it. So it is, it's obviously true to say. Going where, and it actually is a really good way to teach. Doesn't necessarily get feedback, but it can also cause issues, right?
It's a platform for cowards.
That way.
Oh, I would.
I think so, how would you? So, you know, best practices, I don't know. I had, I didn't actually.
We have a face, we have our Facebook page that is very controlled. And will send out last meeting, events. Of like elections, you set up a professional mindset. Anything that's coming up, just make it later. Lori, I won't say Maggie's at, right now she's hosting for us. But I also believe Lori took a lot of interaction.
Right.
We have to speak to that.
Yeah.
That is true.
Yeah.
So when we talk about social media, it's best to break the conversation into pieces. So having an official. Governor. Social media company. Representing the actual.
Yes.
So those type, you should have a social media policy.
Yeah, we do.
And really using Lori in a way that it sounds like you're using it, pushing information out, kind of like a newsroom. Right? You know, this is Rosa construction. We're having this festival at this time. Come visit our park equipment, that kind of stuff. It's really.
Yeah.
We're a town. And using it that way. And I will tell you that. Many businesses or. Developmental thing, or construction. It's become habit, but that's one of the first places. Will look at social media and. And. Want to be a part of an, of a community that is strong, supportive, tolerant. I think that's, that are positive. So that's a best practice for, for using it. Get information out. I would not use my city Facebook page or Twitter than or social. Have to take. To use as an official. Okay, here's a zoning map. Here's other conditions for your laws. Okay, you do that, then all that data that has to be retained. On different schedules. People that people want.
Right.
And so really using it to push things out is. Then the pastors for that. How's it set up? Do you get a lot of comments on it?
They are allowed to comment. We had very, very few. I did have one. The other day. Which was in reference to the fact of the condition of our ditches. At which point I put on there that the reason ditches are not being mowed is because we're waiting for. Rim and tire repaired on the tractor. So therefore, until that's taken care of, there isn't going to be. But I generally, I don't generally comment. I don't comment. I mean, that's.
So that's a good best practice.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I don't engage, I don't engage on it. Because if other people are reading it and they want to comment on it. I also don't feel that it's my place to edit out.
Well, so that's the other part. So that's where the first.
That opinion, where that opinion comes in or try to, to mediate or control where that conversation could, would or would go.
Right. So it, with social media. That's being seen as a form, the governmental spot to social media. And then, then there's a certain factor in play. And it is seen as a, as a. Times, say to a language, and that this is the public work. This is a big mission. Then go into the composition. But either way, you have to be very careful. You can't block. But you can't block people on your Facebook. You can't block people on your Facebook page. So it's treated that same way. And there is a really high level of protection for comments. So if people do comment on the page and they put something on there and you remove it, and of course have found that that was impacted their speech. So of course, if they put something on there like. You know, I, I have, I'm going to wear a bomb to the next weekend. Call everybody up. Okay, that's not protected speech. That's when you call your city attorney to say, what type of speech? That's the type of speech that, something that's threatening like that. Paragraph type stuff. But sometimes paragraph to a person is not paragraph. Right, okay. To one.
My very own way.
So you need to get your city attorney involved in that to, because then you have a legal. And relied upon, and then that protects you a little bit. Commercial speech. So somebody can put on, just for city. And you're on, on Facebook page. Hey, I have setting up my T-shirt shack down the corner. And I'm, if you bring in this coupon, I'm gonna, they have two, everybody can have a two for one for T-shirts. Okay, that's commercial speech. That's not protected on a government site. So you can't. So that is, that's not protected speech for them to, your platform to make money for themselves.
I, I did not know that because I wanted to ask that.
Yeah, and so that's not protected speech. So you can remove it. I mean, if somebody puts it on there and you don't remove it, it's on there, but.
Right, that you may have the ability to not allow it. Other students are a platform to gain money.
Right, but you have to be careful. So again, talk to your city attorney. Because for example, this is truly like powers. I'm going on a church mission trip and I'm going to sell magazines. You know, that all of a sudden is a.
Right.
So you have to, that's why you.
Okay.
But just so you know, that, that's, that's the policies with respect to. Fonds are administered by someone who's with that. Station. The other thing is if there's a mistake in the comment. You know, the records. You have some sources, and also with the politician. I haven't seen. Entity yet, but they're having cases where there's a politician who has made, has posted a comment. Her official page. And then realized maybe they decided to fill it or something. And then they'll go back and change that actual post. And that's been a couple of cases in Wisconsin. Where they said, and then somebody replied to it. And then they, then they changed their original comment. Then they said that that's changing the dialogue, so that.
No.
Speech. It doesn't.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the one. That's governmental. Yeah, so you know, as elected officials, okay, we all have. And all of us.
Hmm.
Got a Facebook page.
That's my answer by my wife.
I, I feel like she should, should sit in my chair. I like the respect.
I'll tell you from.
So, so you, our courts look at it as have. It's how you. So if you're an elected official and you're posting things that you know about. You're an elected official or it's promoting your position as an elected official. And they're going to see that as an elected official page. And they're going to review it at a level for person and that they do. Also, can't block, so it's like your elected official. And so. Many people. Don't. It's harder in small places. Hardly.
Right.
And put it on your personal page. Well, some trying to friend you on your personal page. And let it be friend. And then you say, what's my personal page? Judging is like, look at all the, look at all the cities or the, the town stuff that they're putting on their personal page. It's not really their personal page. So that's why you have to. That, so that's the legal part of it. But the not legal, it's kind of what we talked about. Kind of team and decision-making. All that, if you're an elected official, people are going to see that as an elected official to the time that you're on this board. So if, if there's things going on on social media, they're going to see that as your position. Sure. And. Other people, that's going to have the same effect you talked about. And like. So. And that. So there's a lot of people who are.
Yeah.
That, that all say. Is more of a.
So what you're saying is if I wanted to put something on Facebook that had to do with pork. And I say on there, I'm supporting this as a friend. Thomas St. Joseph resident. That's not really the truth. Because I know about it. Or.
I would, I would take. I would say the judge, look at that. Somebody. By the.
Yeah.
Judge. That would be a good approach for it. That. Do whatever the rest of you say. You know, all, all town. You know, we go like, we evolve, it's different from team, not team.
Yes.
So, but that, that's, that's just a different style. That's the best practices.
And talk to us about what happens when you see these posts. Of, of things on Facebook. That are extremely detrimental to the town. And call the town. Well, some of them are not.
Whether they're a resident or.
Right.
Not somebody on this board.
Right. So they're extremely detrimental. And I'm seeing this happen across the county. Where there's certain individuals, social media sites that they're going after other boards' side hours on other issues for other reasons. And I'm really struggling with, is there any way to combat that without getting? Grab a whole mess, or do you just sit back and take it because that?
You put it on wood so that it doesn't pop up like.
Right, yeah, right. I get that too.
But you really, you can't take a, you don't. You don't take a defensive position?
Um.
Or you don't engage in the.
I, I would not engage in bait with social media. But that's similar. It's just going to be, oh.
That's what I think too, that I have.
It's just going to explode and it's easy. To start. I would say that if there is an actual statement, like you're giving a good example. Let's say that ditch example you gave was on somebody else's social media. And somebody put on there, and, and I wouldn't actually. There's, I don't have.
That was, you know, that was on the town.
Right.
One.
Right, but I'm just saying, going with this example of, let's say it's on an individual person of this, they're never mowing and stuff. You know, putting factual, can't mow it because the, the wheel's off. Yeah. And then they, they're probably going to pop back and then just film the page. Well, if you want to make a factual clarification that truly is a fact, you know, feel really proud to do it, like it's important to do it. I would, I would personally just probably. Page because. Part blown up, but if you feel very, it's important to you and it's factual, you know, it's actually, it's actually fact.
Just don't go with feelings, go with fact. Yeah.
And make sure it's a fact. Because sometimes I, I. You know, so if it's a fact that really means it's a fact, I. Like the wheel actually is off the tractor.
You know.
And you feel it's important that, that's why people, that people know that it's not, that's why that.
That was one of those things that popped up that I happened to be doing maintenance on the website. When I saw it pop up, I thought, oh, this could go down a real bad road. You know, other people started saying, we're not doing mine. And it goes, yeah, well, they took a mailbox or they mowed up my wildflowers or. And it, yeah. So that, but I do have. Just, and I don't have one. I have a personal page. That I don't put town stuff on it because all my relatives, they don't care what I'm doing in town. But I also have seen where, where people will have a personal. And then they actually got a page which you can have, which is called a politician page.
Yep. And I feel like if I was an elected official and I wanted to have. A page, then that's what I would do.
Okay.
I would. But on my personal one, I would sometimes sneak in there and say. Tom decided. And we're going. Probably come here and do this because the judge. If actually have two elected officials, you're not. So, and so when it comes to. Issue. That's true, right, a personal. And right, because it's an issue.
It, it's hard. Social media is got so period, they say anything they want. It's just, it's hard. Obviously, I don't want, I want to correct somebody, but I don't say a word.
Well. I, I think anybody worth their weight in intelligence knows how social media could suck you in or just, or, or get you upset. You know, like, switch over to my business. My wife comes on, blew out. Some, some stuff shakes out and it gets on social media. I couldn't care less. I look at it like a roll of toilet paper. It just keeps going. And, and it doesn't matter to me what you're saying on there because the next day, somebody else will have something else to say about somebody else. I, it's a toxic thing that they created. And what I love is when people get sucked into it because they're so dim. And, and, and it's their only tool of empowerment.
And if you are.
If it's shut off tomorrow, it would be a better world.
I'm 100% with you on that.
But speaking of spring break. But speaking of spring break, they have, they're not social media, they have, they're waiting for social media. Exactly, with former President Trump that. Last year, he actually decided that case and so they said, um, since he's no longer president, then that's one of these. That's active person that decided. Um, so eventually they'll make a decision about social media system. Who's here, what type of forum, this is one of them. Um, but I think there's an interesting case up at the spring break now and I don't know. If you're in it, deciding on it, but it's about media. And defamation claims and they're gonna change the standard for defamation of.
I love it.
You have that super high level as an elected official to that, it's skin.
Yes.
Um, and so that's, that's the other legal part of, somebody says something about you.
Yes.
Is that all I got tonight? I should say other topics.
We do have one more. We would like some advice or some ideas on. The very time-consuming harassing calls that we get from some of our constituents. Can we just put them right straight to answering machine, get back to them, or is there a better?
Oh, yeah.
Back to that, so. The, yeah, so the scenario is our office staff deals with the public, okay? My suggestion was every call goes to the answering machine, they can filter out who's nice. And who ain't. Our staff shouldn't have to verbally pick up and, why didn't you mow my ditch? This is unbelievable, the taxes I pay.
Why don't you create a system?
Put your answerable form on the website. But what's happening is everybody wants to answer that. For instance, I told Chris that today, I was an absolve day and Michelle was answering the phone. She spent about forty minutes on phone calls from Trump, from residents complaining about traffic. And it would be fine if they just called up and said, you know, I'm just letting you know that the traffic's terrible here, it's like freight train. You know, it's, can you hear anything? Just pass it on whoever. That's wonderful. But when you get somebody chong your ear for twelve minutes over, you need to get the cops, you need to get crumple strips, they have driving seventy some miles an hour, you need to get this, you need to get that. I mean, poor, this is the fourth, because what happens is this person talks to that person, the judge to that person, the doctor to that person, and they all have to call. It's too much and one just starts getting worse than the other.
So there's nothing that says you can't have a voicemail, but here's the mistake.
Oh, the door's locked.
Well, so that's, the creation is unsuccessful.
Well, the door's locked because of COVID, it's stayed locked.
So that's, that's something.
And lack of step and you don't.
Right, 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 so that's. That's, that's not always gonna be the case. And so what I'm saying is that at some point, frustrated still, still. I'll just. Um, but no, there's no, no reason why you can't have people go to voicemail now. Part I have concern about a understatement is I mean, it can choose who I get back to based on who I think is gonna be next.
Well.
That's maybe.
Well, this is a great place to learn, aren't we learning here?
So I would talk to your city attorney about that. About what your policy would be, um. But I don't, especially when you're just, I don't think there's anything on that to, to voicemail. I would be, have some type of law that would. They're gonna come in to make sure that if anybody claims that their services aren't provided or that is required as a residency services.
They will go.
Then they'll have, they'll have a record of where the response is. But no, there's no. That's true.
Well.
Yeah.
I know, so, but I, I.
And what about the people here, really, really? I mean, I'm talking really.
I get, yeah, so I'm, this is a fun discussion because part of, part of retaining. Our office staff is a derogatory portion of the public that I don't think they deserve. To have to withstand that, so that's where I came up with the answering machine part, okay? And. I, I know, I wouldn't put anybody in that position, so that's, this is a great conversation to try and. Get down to the bottom of it, of a, of a civil answering. Yeah, I understand people could be upset, but. If the roles were reversed, can I talk to your wife that way?
Um, so I. Just give them tools and stuff there. And then people for the same response. Sometimes they just stop. They know what's gonna happen. So I would, I know, providing. Certainly not easily to say, hey, you're on a, for our town, and by the way, here's a template for you.
Well, they're not every time, it's a damper on a day.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been in here when someone's called up, just left out, tiring of F bombs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I mean, they're holding the phone out here and this is just. Continuous and they're saying, I, I can't talk to, and then just keep it up and I, you know, at one point I told one of the girls, just. Because I don't believe anyone needs to be subjected to that, I don't care what your problem is.
Right.
There's no need to speak to some.
That becomes. And so that's a personal type decision, that's.
Okay.
I, I just, I just would be into a policy of practice that explains people are.
But I just don't think.
You as a. That's the burden, faults, things. Policy, it's other types of policies.
I sometimes I think it's the times we live in that people. Hide behind email on social media, you know, like say anything to anybody. Or any, and transfers into the.
You know, it prevents a good ass beat.
I, I wanna pick them up for you, how's that? I mean, I'm just.
I, I'm getting it.
I know, but you see what I'm saying, it's, it's really hard to, you know, we all have to support each other in this. And if we do, hopefully we don't have as much.
Right. I'm pregnant dating.
Oh, okay.
These are public, these are public.
Yeah.
On the file cabinet that holds.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
But I get back to the, um, data provision, actually, uh, to our residents. It is something that I've been hoping for, for about a year and a half, which is providing the data that the board gets to the residents. And I understand we have a staff shortage right now, but we didn't for about a year. I think that's one of the biggest complaints I get from residents is that they can't get access to the documents that we are talking about. And then when they get to the meeting, they still can't and we don't have packets and we don't have that. Available to them, so they don't even know what we're looking at. So that is my request and I'm gonna keep on asking for it, to add those documents at the bottom of the agenda. Just make them available on the online, not to the newspaper, I know that costs money, but. Um, for the online agenda, anything like, we're gonna have the noise ordinance come up here tomorrow night, uh, draft and.
I don't know what you're saying about.
There's a draft in our drive.
That's not what they're supposed to be doing at the. Board, they're not supposed to.
There is a draft in the planned commission draft. Well.
But I think Dara's question goes beyond that.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and to be honest, I have, I just don't have time, so.
I have to agree on that, yeah.
So it doesn't seem like. Outside of what is required for. Can you make decisions from the documents? If it's easy to attack to fill the website.
Theresa.
Then that would make people feel.
I know, but that is, I'm trying to be whatever. That's what.
Um, so anyway, um. It's, I think it's not as personal and there's certain. If, if it's required, you should do it, but you can check. But it, it just needs to be careful that you have somebody reviewing the documents, sometimes there's something in the packet. Then you see as.
Personal.
It's not public.
Exactly.
Right, and so then you just.
I don't know what that is. Right.
So, so, um, so that would be the thing that you'd have to, you'd have to adapt to the stuff.
Right.
But there's not.
No, I know personnel is.
Personals.
Yeah, that is absolute.
It's gonna take a while for me to get there, unfortunately, we don't have staff to do this. Just getting the dry boat is a lot. I'm trying to mow the dry as we're going to. But it's a lot just getting ready for. I know as before, as before, and I just. But. We only have some hours in the day, so.
I would just try, I would just try, we talked a lot about that, whether it's required or not.
It's not required at this stage.
That's what, that was my. And if it's not required, then like to get.
So, yeah.
Just to your voice, that helps people with their.
Do you? Yeah, please, thank you.
That's what for everyone, we have the ability, yeah.
And we should.
Yeah, uh, the other, is there something that's about that, that's. Oh. No, it unbelievably.
We're, we're, I've been one of our meetings with all the committees of the food's town, what on it?
Okay.
But yeah, we're, we're already doing that.
Yeah, perfect, that gets me. Sometimes.
Yeah, we've been doing it for quite a few years.
Yeah, perfect.
Before I got here.
Perfect.
This last time, so yeah, it's going on. Anything else, anybody? We did this one. The time passed.
I just, right.
Where do we go from here? Tell me the.
Um, well, I think you as a. Should, um, make a decision on that kind of discussion somehow. But based on what you were tonight, what goes to session two three and then. Then you're doing. That, if it wasn't. That's something that isn't official for you. And then just take away those, like. Make sure possible. To have those best practices that can be patiently to share information.
Anything else, can we do one more? Yes, Rick.
You offered your services. When we have a very hot meeting, so I take it you've been involved in some very. What, what works the best, what did?
Topic. Right now.
You. Okay.
So in the past, like I helped. Session.
Say again.
I've helped with this, I helped with the same all minimum wage, sweet sessions, you gave me that information. Brought, and that brought groups of, um, employers, employees. Residents who are very intentional about the next. And then being a small team, it's important, that could be that same. So, um, that also involves the sessions. To use. Certainty about that and then, you know, do a gallery tour, so there's a whole bunch of different exercises that you can do. Um, that help. A close listening sessions. Sure, as opposed to just.
We might need that on a. Move some forward. Yeah, we need to think that way. Right, 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 right.
Just wanna ask a question in the board, when our chair left. I wasn't here, when he left, do you feel that this would have been helpful, something like this?
Previous chair?
Yeah.
I don't have all the explanations of why he left. And the ones that I have heard, probably should have.
I don't.
I was around the board.
Yeah, I don't know.
I was, I was a supervisor.
And I have zero clarity on it.
I, you know what, the, um. Google, if you go in your Google emails. You should be able to put in that October date, October twenty eighteen. The day of the board, whatever the date of the board meeting was and look for his resignation. That was sent to the board and it was a couple, two, three lines sentence and that's all there was.
Well, I guess I was just wondering if, if there had been. Any indication or anything with something like this.
Oh, you, that, that, it, I don't know, do, Theresa, you can speak to that if you want, I.
I, you know, there were decisions that had to be made pretty quick. At the time, just to get a chair in place, we were in the middle of mitigation. And you could not have a supervisor do the job because it was required to have a chair signature on all these docs that we, we were trying to. We were at the end of it almost, we were, that was the fall and we had to till May first to get through it. So there were tons of things that had to be done and, I mean, I left the board. The board asked me if I would do it and I left the room and left my assessment. Do I think this could have helped? It, it would have had to be something really quick and fast, would it have helped the prior chair to get through the conflicts that he was dealing with? Maybe, maybe.
That's your question.
But that bridge had already, that, that water had already gone under that bridge by the time the changeover took place.
Yeah, that's the time I'm talking about, though, prior to the changeover.
Probably would have helped him. Because he was not dealing with things, I think, in the best manner at the time. Obviously, he was under a lot of pressure and there was a lot of conflict, so it helped.
So we needed our attorney Catherine to come in and say. There's problems, we need, like Krista.
Like Krista.
That was good.
And, and I'm not sure she didn't say it to him.
Yeah, maybe, maybe she.
You know, Chris said it to me in a home hall, he was, he just said to me, and Jimmy said, you are in big trouble. And he said, if this doesn't turn around. And he said, if this doesn't turn around with your board, you're in big, big, big trouble. I'm not sure she, she probably recognized it and maybe said the same thing to Tom. It just didn't go anywhere.
When you said big trouble, what does that mean?
Lots of things, he was concerned with. What was happening at Port Babel and the disconnect and the, um. I don't wanna say misunderstanding, but just how divisive it was.
Wow, I don't know that, that's what I was looking for. I guess I'm looking for a definition of big trouble.
I think we had a lack of, I, I still say we have lack of policy right now that we all understand and. When I say point of information, I wanna be able to say, our policy says, and Teresa just said. You can talk if you go up to that podium. You didn't do that there, sir, so soon as you do that, you can go up there and dress like a clown if you want and say everything you want.
Put your name and address.
Yeah, put your name and address. Get your clown address.
And I think Chris is concerned with what happened at that June meeting. People were being shouted off the podium where there's all this clapping going on and all this hoo, hoo, ha, ha going on. It was like there.
There was no respect.
Blackers, he knew I was trying to maintain control, but he didn't. He perceived that I was doing it kinda on my own. And I think he was concerned that this board has to come together.
I'm curious.
Has to come together this morning. And I think we've done, I think this helped me tonight to see that and hear from others that they recognize that, that that was a difficult. That was very difficult to see. I was just like, what in the hell?
Well, I've sat through some pretty, pretty testy county board meetings and. I don't know, I just think that we're not, we're not alone. I mean, I just can't see like Rand Paul sitting down with Nancy Pelosi to work things out. So I know it's, I mean, at the county level, it's, it's pretty heated. It gets real heated.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, caller.
Caller one, you're up.
I think that the concerns with local government are that, um, you don't want, you know, if you're Nancy Pelosi. At that level, it shouldn't happen, but probably a whole lot more who are very party centric. And, um. But that's a different system for decision making. Proportions of that. Local government system is set up. Individuals voters on a decision-making board to oversee operations. And so to me, as an observer, that feels different. And that I think the concern with things like you had is that it's gonna disrupt the ability. That's done and you guys have to function as a corporation to oversee. And if you can't make decisions at this meeting, they're not gonna be made because of. And so I think that that's probably, and I'm not speaking, you know, I haven't talked about it, but I know that that from my perspective. That's a concern. You're also a group employer and you lost, and the fact is that you lost people. And I think that as an employer, there's something that's impacting why people left. Uh, you know, the environment is probably something you might have heard about. Guessing again from your ways and that's at, as an employer, you should be thinking about those situations too. Cause like you have a lot of duties, you're upper, you're overseeing public works, you're overseeing utilities, you're overseeing, um, employees. So, so those are two of the operations that you're studying. You have a decision making board, you can get decisions made and to. Be aware of employment. Those are two things that you're charged. Boss, you're a good boss.
So what has the employee turnover been, say in the last three years? So.
Horrible.
Our last year and then the year before.
Eight years.
Well, we have, we have two clerks and several deputies.
And just then let's be careful of personal.
I'm sorry, wait, we've had a long-term clerk. I say long-term, it's to me longer than five years. And we've had a variety of deputies which does come and go.
And it's important to be able to do business pretty fast.
And I think it comes down to that respect thing. I think respect and understanding has a lot to do with it. People wanna feel respected and understood. I was at the bridge opening for the trail two weeks ago now and I talked to Amy Komenchar. And she had mentioned something in her speech that I thought was really telling. She said, almost nine years ago now, she was one of the movers and shakers that pushed through the approval of that bridge that got signed by Obama at the time. She's a Democrat, as you all know. She worked with Republicans and got all one hundred senators to sign off on that bill. And in addition, the Republican governor from Wisconsin and the Democratic governor from Minnesota also worked together to get that bridge done. That is a fact. And she said to the crowd then, she said, that would never, ever happen today with the politics as it is. And I thought this is a sad commentary on our. Whole environment. That we can't find a way to work together. And she did talk about that. And I don't care whether you like her politics or not, that's not why I'm saying this. What I'm saying is eight, nine years ago, she was one of those that worked hard with everyone.
Across party lines.
To get that done and so did both of these governors and we lost that. We just so lost it, not only permeating down into our town government.
Thank you, Pam.
So I'll make you laugh before you go home, so.
Second, I need to have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
So this is twice I've seen this book.